This is our Ware County Board of Commissions regular meeting agenda for Monday, November 11th. Five o'clock. Okay. I'm gonna do a roll call. Mr. Burson.
Present.
Mr. Pope.
Present.
Mr. Lucas.
Present.
Mr. Hendrick.
Here.
Chair vote. Okay. We've already did a pledge of allegiance and prayers, so I'm gonna give that. Agenda items. Okay, resolution for 2024-31 reappointment request to the Board of Assessors.
You got that conference.
Conference.
Traffic.
That's at the end.
We're gonna do it.
We're gonna vote first and then they'll.
We're gonna do it at the end of it. Let's get this behind us now, because it's gonna last a while.
Dennis wrong.
Okay. We'll go ahead and get these behind us. Is that okay with you? Okay. All right. The appointment for the Board of Assessors. Okay, who wants to make that?
Is he here?
He's not.
They were looking to see if Mr. Rollins was here.
Is Mr. Rollins here?
Yeah.
Not here. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Dennis H. Rollins per resolution 2024-31. It's actually a reappointment to the Board of Assessors. Being that Ms. Kathy Boyette, she expires December 31st, 2024. Attached, we have a letter from Mr. Rollins requesting to be reappointed to the Board of Assessors. A term from January 1st, '25 through December 31st of '27.
Okay.
Sir.
Motion to go second.
Sir.
Sir.
Second. I got a second. All right. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Burson.
Ah.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas.
Ah.
Mr. Hendrick.
Ah.
Chair vote. Okay. It'll be resolution 2024-32, appointment to the Board of Assessors. That's a new one. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt resolution 2024-32 to appoint Mr. Andrew Christian Walker, Jr., to the Ware County Board of Tax Assessors for the term January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2027.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Walker. Is anybody? Any comment? Any? Okay. Well, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Ah.
Mr. Pope.
Ah.
Mr. Lucas.
Ah.
Mr. Hendrick.
Ah.
Chair vote. Okay. Okay, we got a resolution for 2024-33, reappointment to the Okeechobee Regional Library Board.
Mr. Motion, Chairman, I'm all the motion that we accept resolution 2024-33 for the reappointment of the Okeechobee Regional Library Board. Ms. Carla Parker.
Carter.
Term December, January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2028.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Is any discussion on it?
I know she done a very valuable job over the past three years. She's been very, very good, so I think she's good for that position. And she seems to enjoy it.
Thank you, Tim.
I agree with that.
Thank you. Okay. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Ah.
Mr. Pope.
Ah.
Mr. Lucas.
Ah.
Mr. Hendrick. Hendrick.
Ah.
Chair vote. Okay. This is D, the purchase request for the GM Chevy Duramax. Delete that bundle now. We gonna table that, let them, have we found any more out on this thing or?
I think we could probably make a motion that we can go ahead and we're gonna have to do them. Just don't know who we're gonna use yet. I got, um, a number. I don't think he sent it to me yet. There's a guy called Big Boar Diesel in Lutewissie that does them. Pittman Feller in Pearson. And, uh, David Oglesby off of Bell Street. That's here in town, so, um, we got a few that we need to contact on. And just see, you know, what all it entails as far as their labor wise. And maybe they can even get the parts cheaper.
What we're gonna do is approve it then and let them go ahead.
I think we need to go ahead and approve that we, am I correct? We need to go ahead and approve that we're gonna, we gotta do something.
Okay, and I agree, Commissioner Henderson, we definitely need to do it. Should've done it, what, last week or yesterday or whatever. But do we need to find out first, I mean, what this cost is gonna be before we vote on it? I mean, like I say, we need to do it.
Or that she's got a way to word it.
Well, it's certainly up to the commission. I mean, we, we know that we're under, you know, basically a time sensitive issue here. So, uh, we, you could direct staff to research it and then you all could have a called meeting on that issue. I know that could be not attractive for a variety of reasons. You know, one other way to do it, which is not perfect, and certainly would be kind of the exception rather than the rule, is, but you could give, uh, staff direction to research, you know, and get these three quotes and then give the chairman authority to, you know, sign up to this amount for the lowest quote or something of that sort, so then you didn't have to come back before this body. Now, it's a little bit cumbersome, but I think it's still, you know, within bounds if you wanted to go that route.
Okay, I think whatever we do, we need to, I guess, involve Dr. Bill and this gentleman, I can't think of his name. Chris, you know, uh, because they know, like, I guess, what they're needing.
Absolutely.
Like I say, I don't know much about it. I mean, I just know it's something that's gotta be done.
What I'll do when I get phone numbers of all these people, I'll send them to Melinda and let them take it from there.
Yeah, we need to do two of them now. Is that what you're saying?
Just two.
At least two of them.
At least two.
Right.
Are the other ones, do they have the same equipment on them?
Got new ones on there.
It's the same, it's gonna be the same in that same year model.
Not, not the, not the two new ones that we got coming, but the ones that we're still using now, they have the same setup.
Correct. It's the 19 and the 23. It's the two newest ones we just got.
Okay.
Last year and then the back.
So he'll get me the information, I'll call, get prices and send it to y'all.
We wanna give them approval to go ahead with two of them.
That's the only two that are messed up.
Just for two.
Turn that, okay.
Yep.
Y'all understand that?
I think so. Right now, Chris, I believe, what, like $5,000 something for each one, right?
It's $5,074.
Just the parts. So now we got to find someone that.
Labor.
That knows how to do them.
Mr. Barry and Mr. Larry said our mechanic out there could do it, right?
Larry says they can do it, but he's like me, don't really know if that computer is shut down and we don't know. Larry, you don't know.
I saw this market, he was very confident. He's got experience with programming, truck working in a dealership. Never done one of these before. Essentially, the program decides to go to the all the same.
And he's, he's sharp on all this electronics and computer stuff and all he's done is say Carl, one, two motors that was previously misfired, knows the cost, he is good with his computer and stuff. And he's looked at Chris's program where to add and off. He feels comfortable, because it includes the build. Flash drive where you reprogram the computer that's in the vehicle and basically.
Basically, what it's playing, when you taking everything off and put dummy pipes in place of it and you put dummy sensors in there, you reprogram the computer with the supplied flash drive or whatever they call it. And you fool the computer into thinking that everything's killed there with a dummy chip.
And it gives you a breakdown on page two of how that would work.
Now, is he, is this, Chris, is this guy, is he warranted? Is he, is he bonded? I mean, the mechanic?
It's, it's our mechanic. Ware County.
Oh, we gonna do it for Chris, just order the, I guess, order the parts. You said it right.
If the majority of the commission wants to just order the parts and let them do it, I'm glad to vote yes on that, right now.
Yeah, this kit is just for the parts. And it comes with the down pipe that's needed for being replaced and also the tailpipe with the catalytic converter in it. Um, the cab, the, basically full with the sensor plugs and then the program. They step-by-step instructions with everything and a video of how it does it. And it, like I said, it's based on per day number.
Now, on, on another note now, this thing probably gonna have a little more power than normal.
Correct.
So can we, can we dial that back? That way we ain't locking up the crank and busting rear ends, transmissions.
That's gonna be excellent, but that's.
See what I'm saying? We might, we might have to see if we can tune that thing down a little bit, because.
Oh, they step on the gas now, it's a little different.
I don't think this kit does that same, this is basically the leak that this exhaust do and failures they have on that as far as performance and, uh, you might have a little bit more performance, because you're free of empty exhaust and breathe a little better.
Yeah.
Programming this thing, getting two, three hundred more horsepower in this kit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I wouldn't figure it would be a tune like that neither, but just any more on a motor that's already been wore is potentially, you know, can cause catastrophic failure.
You're gonna see an increase in horsepower and torque in it, but it's not gonna be, because we're not.
Not gonna be enough.
Well, the options were, you could go with a five-inch straight pipe through, yeah, then you're gonna see a lot more. But with the catalytic converters still being in place and the muffler, you're not gonna see that.
Maybe 20, 25 more horsepower.
Right, you're not gonna see that huge increase and with the program is you're not looking for, it's not a performance program. It's just to take the system.
Just to delete.
Correct.
So I just make, make sure I'm clear. So Commissioner Hendrick, you were saying that the guy, one of the guys, that the price, what, $4,000 or whatever?
That was on my 21 model. I just had to replace my whole death tank on a 21 model 3500 Duramax. Same thing we got there. I don't know, theirs might be 4,500s, but I think they're 3,500s.
3,500.
And, and my mechanic that I use now, called him up and it was like $3,800 for everything.
That's the parts.
Just to delete my death. That was it. So that's where I was coming up with that. But we are in a time crunch here, so we might just have to let, uh, one of our mechanics do it and go ahead and, and, you know, so there ain't no back and forth.
And then they.
And we don't get fined.
Get, um, the information for the, have the information for the next year when they come in.
You know, we might just be here where we can't explore options.
Right.
Well, hopefully the next year, we're not gonna see the issues that we're having now, because they are gonna be bigger chassis. They're gonna be, they have 550s, not the Chevy 3500s. So it's a little bit more, uh, of a truck to be able to handle that weight and everything else. I mean.
Well, regen's still regen, it don't matter.
But it's all supposed to become, these are supposed to be coming with the EDA special emissions for the ambulances. I've gotten two sides of the story. Either it's gonna not have a death fluid system on it or it's gonna have a death fluid system, but it's not gonna allow it to go into limp mode and it's supposed to allow us to force regen. So hopefully that'll, that'll solve our problems, just.
Moving forward with newer ambulances.
Well, that's what the two, the one.
From those.
One's supposed to be in June, one's supposed to be in November, the beginning of this year coming up. So, I'd say that's a year away from having, or six months, seven months away from having the first one. So that's the, the issue is, is we're getting behind, and this is causing preventive maintenance to go out further. And then, you know, when you, when you call 911, you expect an ambulance to show up.
Oh, I agree too.
And, I mean, that's just, we're to the point now that we don't have the extra ambulance sitting there to cycle out the ducalent maintenance and then our truck goes down. We had to send a crew to home, because we didn't have a crew to work with. Um, when you look at that, when we're running 850 calls and you did have four crews on, now you got three. That's just more stress than the ones that are.
So right now, what we'll do is just, if we vote, we'll vote to go and get this.
Get two of them.
Right, and pick up two of them. And then Larry.
I agree with that.
Will have his, uh, crew out there, I guess, to whoever that does this to, to pay the effort.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
And that total for both would be $10,148.
I have a motion that we do.
I make a motion that we allow the request to purchase GM Chevy Duramax 6.6 LST full delete bundle. And I believe the county manager's got the full amount, $10,000.
$148.
$148, $10,148. And that's to repair the two that we got down right now.
For the parts.
Okay.
The parts to repair them.
All right, I got, I have a second on it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it anymore?
Hello?
If not, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Ah.
Mr. Pope.
Ah.
Mr. Lucas.
Ah.
Mr. Hendrick.
Ah.
Chair vote. Okay. This is a purchase request for a vehicle maintenance rolling air hydraulic lift.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer motion that we approve this purchase request for the vehicle maintenance rolling air hydraulic lift, 30 K pounds, 30,000 pounds, and in view of this is a request from the Pugle Works to break down slash garage management to facilitate doing their work, I guess a little bit more speedier.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, any discussion?
You got an income source for this, funded source?
I don't, I'd have to ask Beverly.
Yeah, where, where is the money gonna come from?
Where?
2014 splosts out of that 650 something that was left.
No, that's the 10.
That's the, okay, sorry. How much was in the 2014? I forgot.
2.499.
Okay, yeah. 2.499 million that come out of the 2014.
2014 splosts.
That's a lot of money for a jack.
Yeah, I just, uh.
That includes the installation.
I don't see why we, huh?
And it included the installation. I didn't keep one of those sheets for me.
$1,020. I jack up a truck a bunch of times.
The installation.
Yeah, I just, I just spoke with somebody, commission, um, Ms. County Manager. I just spoke with somebody a while ago, uh, that is willing to check and see if they could sell us theirs, which has not even been taken out of the box yet, because it is too big for their garage. He's gonna do some checking and he's gonna call me back and we might be able to get it for a whole lot cheaper than what this is gonna cost us.
That's that deal.
Is it April, April time, same weight and everything?
Yes, but it just won't fit in their garage. Garage ain't high enough.
So it's like a home garage?
No, this is, this is.
Inestable.
It's a county garage, just like ours.
And they haven't taken it out the box?
They hadn't taken it out the box, because it'll go too high. Once you put the ambulance on there, that ambulance will go through the roof.
You got a pan right there.
Y'all gonna have one rock there, Scott?
Yes, sir.
Y'all gonna use that one, right there? Yes, we gonna use it.
Who's gonna use it? Uh, the county had it.
Pierce. He said they gonna use it.
They are gonna.
They said they just checked.
We gonna put it outside. It won't fit inside, but we gonna put it outside on the pad.
Well, for sure.
Good idea.
Okay.
Can I ask a question or something? Mr. Mallox. What's the matter?
Hey, sir.
So the one that y'all have, that's one, that's what y'all having to get it for, for like ambulances and dump trucks, stuff like that?
Correct.
Okay.
The purchase, if they realized that it was, it couldn't be raised inside the building, so there was more surplus. And when I got there, I said, just, just put it out outside and use them outside.
Okay. Well, we have to build a building for ours now, Larry.
If you want a building in there, mine all up over.
Well, he said theirs wasn't fit, that's it, too big, so.
They must be got, they got a, what, older building, lower ceiling or something like that?
Probably ain't no bigger than our building.
That's why he's saying it's smaller than ours.
Larry, excuse me. That will work in our building?
Yes, sir. Then have Chris come and look at it and he's like fixing jack a lot back.
So it will, won't be an issue.
You know, like anything else, you gotta use a sand for your runs up through the roof, but if this could fit in there where others was at, if it ain't high enough, work, it'll work.
Who is this thing made by? What's, who's it? Who made your package of it? Lewis Tool and Equipment LLC. Lewis Tool and Equipment.
Bikes with Georgia.
Made in China?
Probably. Probably got some of that stuff, need to wear gloves, but.
Any more discussion on it? Well, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Ah.
Mr. Pope.
Ah.
Mr. Lucas.
No.
Mr. Hendrick?
Nay.
Chair vote, nay. Okay. Got a rezoning request for Hazel Street. And, um, I hear a motion to approve that rezoning.
Hopefully that we approve the rezoning at, what, 1942 Hazel Street? R50 M H to, R50 to R50 M H.
Sir, second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Ah.
Mr. Pope.
Ah.
Mr. Lucas.
Ah.
Mr. Hendrick.
Ah.
Chair vote. Okay. Manager's comment.
I don't have anything then to echo what Commissioner Burson said earlier, just on behalf of Ware County and I would say my family, thanks to all of the veterans who've served and given us the opportunity to do what we're doing right now.
Absolutely. It's a great thing, that's why they got back from back there. And I got a brother sitting there for me.
Okay. Do we have a motion to go in?
Make a, I make a motion, we go into executive session for, for, uh, employee purposes.
First one.
For sale.
Okay. Motion to go in.
Yeah, I made a motion to go in, please second it.
Oh, okay, I did.
Okay. Got a motion and a second we need to vote on?
Yes.
Okay. Mr.? Mr. Burson.
Ah.
Mr. Pope.
Ah.
Mr. Lucas.
Ah.
Mr. Hendrick.
Ah.
Chair vote. Okay.
Y'all ready?
Uh, we're running track.
I'm gonna get up.
He spoke now.
Mr. Chairman, I salute that we can come out of executive session.
Can I say something?
Okay, we got a motion and a second to come out of the executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we out of the executive session. Now, we're back into the regular meeting. We have any... Okay, what we want to do is ask Mr. Chris, if he would, to come up and get back into the transportation planning.
This is exactly what we appreciate, because we came out early enough. So I think everybody that came through tonight spent some time with us in the training room. And our goal today was that we go through these real quick. We got a ten person on the website. I don't know where Greg's my able-bodied help, but I did this phone break. And they've got a little void. But it's real simple. You've heard our spiel the first two times we've been down here. We appreciate you all letting us update your plan. We really created a new plan. So Department of
Hey.
Y'all ready?
He spoke now.
Mr. Chairman, I salute that we can come out of executive session.
Can I second? Okay, we got a motion and a second to come out of the executive session. All in favor?
Uh.
Uh.
Any opposed? Okay, we out of the executive session. Now, we're back into the regular meeting. We have any... Okay, what we want to do is ask Mr. Chris if he would to come up and get back into the transportation planning. Okay?
This is exactly what we appreciate because we came out early enough. So I think everybody that came through tonight spent some time with us in the training room. And our goal today was that we go through these real quick. We've got a ten post on the website. I don't know where Greg's my able-bodied help, but I did this phone break. And they've got a little void. But it's real simple. You've heard our spiel the first two times we've been down here. We appreciate you all letting us update your plan before we really create a new plan. So Department of Community Affairs, Georgia DOT, has standards and procedures and policies they want local governments to follow when they adopt the plan that they will then take from your hall and say, "We agree and disagree." But it becomes the planning document, the source for how they'll work collaboratively. We hope to help fund particularly projects that the state and the federal government are going to participate in. Because as y'all know, transportation projects cost way more than any local government, even with the TSPLOST can afford. So, how do I go to the next slide? Here we go. So basically, it's hard to read. We have all the slides. Do you have a handout if you want one? But there's just a number of topics you're expected to touch on. Safety, truck traffic, accidents, congestion, alternate mobility, captain... Oh, great. Young kids, they're everywhere.
Railroad.
Railroad. Railroads. And so we... All the topics that the state expects you to look at aren't always applicable, but the plan document spells out much uniquely for the community. So it's not one size fits all, but it's one process that fits all. So the answers that come out will always be different. And I'll let Greg, I'll introduce Greg. He'll be there in a time or two. And Greg's joined us like five years ago now, I guess. I feel old because my son went to high school with this kid, so I feel my age.
Yeah, we grew up together, so...
That kid is going to work for me.
From...
We took a look through this slide.
So we have a team of engineers and planners working on this. I've been at Atlas for five years. We appreciate the opportunity to be 111 and top long. Recently got AICP certified. The process today, and I know it's late, so we appreciate everybody, attendants and commissioners, but the process today is you have a little knowledge, really come down here and listen, listen, listen. We've got some feedback already. Everything you see here on the boards, sorry, everything you see here on the slides is in the administration room on the boards. And as we see through, so, you know, we'll go back. How do you go? There we go. So here, as Chris talked about, these are the main elements of the plan. And we want to know, okay, what are your priorities? So we have a board to vote in the next room. Indicate your priorities. That's going to basically prioritize what we look at in the needs assessment report, which is the next step of the process. What we're working on right now is the data inventory, collecting existing data using technical data, stakeholder, public feedback, and wrapping that into a report that we'll submit as soon as we wrap that up. And then the next step would be assessment of existing and future conditions. And then the last step will be recommendations of projects. And projects that we look at are going to be implementable, fiscally achievable. Or if they are, for example, like a bypass, it's a separate feasibility study we have in this plan, try to work on that across county in partnership with GDOT. This is just consistency with the 2021 comprehensive plan update. There was, like, that did provide some feedback. We wanted to just make sure that we're consistent kind of with the last plan. The 2021 comprehensive plan, as y'all know, was comprehensive in its approach, land use, zoning, not just transportation. We pulled out specific transportation elements and have included that for review. And then the vision. We really want this feedback drafted, the vision, but this is definitely an important part of the process to get the buy-in, or if you like, what you don't like. So the vision, improve life in our county by moving good, safely, efficiently moving the county, emphasis on multi-middle connectivity, mobility, safety, addressing social, economic, environmental effects and impacts. Want it to be fiscally attainable plan, improve connectivity, ensure the transportation system is efficient and resilient. Resiliency is important to do more extreme weather events come up, address planned and future development, and prevent the traffic. And here are the goals we talked about before.
And... That's the last slide. I would add, and Greg had a good point, the comprehensive plan we referenced is from 2021. DCA likes to update those every five years. So the work we're doing right now, we're rolling into the effort, you all have to produce an updated plan, an interim report sometime in 2025 before your five-year due date in 2020, 2026. So this is, it's a good timing. First, it's the first transportation plan you've had in two decades, and it'll coincide with the DCA comprehensive county-wide joint city-county planning effort. And Spencer's been really helpful about figuring out ways to get all this information on the website. A lot of the folks that came tonight saw the ad in the paper, they saw the little blurb on the website, and then the city and the county are going to share the data. And you've got a pretty robust ArcGIS mapping tool that you've been using to help pinpoint your debris cleanup from hurricane. And that's the same sort of tool we can use. Citizens can say, "I live here, put a manual show up, tell us what you're worried about." So we'll know where you live and what your issues are. And they'll all go into this draft report, which will be back right after the holidays. So the timing's good. Get people between now and when they get to Thanksgiving, Christmas. And we'll come back to y'all with a working document for review early in the year. Hopefully, get up to downtown before the General Assembly goes home.
So you're measuring your new, the new study with a comprehensive plan, so they'll go together using the comprehensive plan as the basis to do your study?
That plus all the data GDOT collects on an annual basis, and their prior, their prior planning.
So that's, so it's kind of literature, so we're going to use that as, as we're at the foundation to say, hey, we want to be consistent with this plan, but then use updated data, that's what we want to try to use. For example, we pull truck volume data, like 2024 is, red is the regional integrated transportation, pretty advanced tool to look at real-time truck volumes with GPS satellite. So it's a little bit of data-driven, a little bit of review plan, and a lot of the stakeholder and public feedback.
Sounds pretty comprehensive, what we're getting, right?
Yeah, exactly. That's that, that consistency that Greg mentions is what the policymakers rely on. There's another one adage, I won't bore you, but many years ago, they wanted to build an extension of the Stone Mountain Freeway into downtown Atlanta. It's called, what, Interstate 475, going through Druid Hills. Jim Carter had been our president. It got vocal opposition for a lot of reasons, some good, some bad. And it went to court. The final judge, when it finally got to the federal appeals court, it went to Supreme Court, but the ruling was, you may not like the department's answer to the question they posed, but the only way you can sue us, or you can win a lawsuit, is show that the department did not follow the process prescribed by law. So all the steps we're doing today, make sure you followed all the processes. And then the outcome of proposed projects becomes something you can debate the merits, but you can't debate the process.
Good. Thank you.
Good point.
I got a question.
Sure.
Chairman, all the information that he just gave on the trucks, the semis, in real-time, are y'all doing the same comprehensive study on the railroad? Because the railroad is what everybody, including us in this county, get upset about.
Yeah, that's a great question. We've met with Greg Camuso, and we've got, they'll share some track data with us on average trains. They also, they may have mentioned it to y'all, they've rolled out a trial, not in Georgia, but they have, obviously, they know within a second where every train is. And they're looking at ways to roll that out initially to EMS departments, so they can route vehicles to emergencies around blockages. But they're also looking to how they can integrate that into your Google app on your iPhone, Waze, and all those other things, share it with Georgia DOT, so they'll have a little better modeling tools. But yeah, no, that's...
Is there a question? What we're doing, the project...
It's all unique.
Because we're doing the project right now in President Street, Savannah, looking at aggregate rail crossing. It's costing quite a bit of backup.
Yeah.
So it's not the same database, I don't believe. I believe that's just vehicles. But we do have access to, if you're happy trains, how long they're stopping for. We use that on President Street. So all give with our railroad, give it eight years. We've been with us for thirty-plus years and...
Savannah, Savannah Railroad over there, whatever.
Yeah, the President Street has a sort of short life. It's going against the port.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not nothing compared to ours. I mean, we got the largest hunkyard, probably the largest in the country. It's one of the largest in the world. And they just added six, was, I think it was, is Jason Rubin-Bauer still here? I believe it was 600 more acres they're adding to the rice yard right now.
Y'all...
They're adding six, just think about that. They're adding 600 more acres. We're 900 acres now.
Intermodal freight plus the mixed goods, yeah. It's, the trains are getting longer.
Trains are up to two and a half miles now. Literally, two and a half miles.
So I was going to say there's comparison, but we were able to pull data just in terms of that, how long trains were stopping on that track. I'll see if we can do, do the same.
We've had trains on US One. We've had trains on US One North. Trains on US One North, we've had trains, you go to work in the morning, eight o'clock, and you turn right, and you're like, oh, man, there's a train. So you go left, got to go down to Tebow. You get off of work at four o'clock, and the train's still there.
Well, it's probably a different one, but...
And that system that Craig has talked about, that could at some point play into variable message signs. Not the best solution. Best solution might be the more bypasses, more bridges. But if you had a way to alert people automatically...
I mean, I love our railroad now. I mean, I love it.
It's a big part of the economy.
It's a big part of the economy. And a lot of people have sat in these same positions, and they're scared that you're going to make the railroad mad, and they're going to leave.
No, they're not going anywhere if they own tracks.
Where they going? You know, they're not going to leave where they're standing. They got it too good.
But it's that interaction, like you're talking about.
Right.
I mean, at the aggregate crossing, it's that interaction of the residents. We've seen it on the GDOT safety study, 2021, we kicked out in '22, I believe it was near the stadium, Memorial Stadium, with aggregate crossings, peak hour, you have track, you train stop along the track, so.
And they're talking now...
I know, well, they have it.
Yeah, they're talking now about closing three of those. And we're asking for two of them not to be closed, because if they do close those three, and the two that we don't want closed, they're going to black back book, just, I mean, cars are going to be stacked up from Tomberlin all the way up to the stadium.
There's more traffic on that track now than there was in '21.
Right.
On the Brunswick Rail...
And if you, if they close in two, you're going to clog up from Tomberlin to the stadium, you're going to clog up City all the way up to St. Mary's.
That's another reason why this study's good, because Fort Worth is moving on their bulked transfers to Brunswick. So a lot of that traffic on rails and trucks that went to Savannah is now going to come east to go, to go to Brunswick, not maybe a gulf or a north to go to Savannah first. So a lot of moving parts, but we'll be back after the holidays.
And have you heard, sir, that they, some tracks are going to be doubled?
Yes, we worked on some other projects for Norfolk Southern, where we built siding, passing tracks, the storage tracks.
And what about, what about the one they're talking about tripling? Have you heard on that one?
I've not heard that. But of course, they generally have 200 feet of ride away, so they tend to...
Well, we were, I think we had to go back, Ms. Counselor, Ms. County Manager. Didn't we have to redo our study because we were told to go higher?
Oh, yeah, the bridge height for the dump stack trains.
Right. But it wasn't that, it was because of the triple, because we had already met the measurements.
Curvers on the bottom core of the bridge, that's right. It would have made the end bands move out further, accommodate wider tracks.
So we had to beef up the going on and coming off. You know, they had to make it stronger and more stouter because of the talk of the triple track.
And I will say from experience, railroads always say they're going to double or triple, but very rarely do. They do occasionally. One case of one was, we worked on the Grange years ago, I think it was in Passover. But railroad said, you know, we may have to raise this track, there's rumor of an automobile plane coming to the Grange.
You know, we'll be a lot more susceptible, susceptible for them to double and triple tracks here, though, just the amount of their traffic.
A lot of times they do it for storage and passing.
That's right. And, yeah, passing staging up out there. If they would have doubled on across the river right there, it'd have helped us out tremendously.
Exactly. It would.
What this plan was for, was for us to get back into regional.
Exactly.
What this, this whole plan is for us to get back into regional, the family. Correct.
Because it gives you a...
We're getting no help from the regional.
And...
We're paying $10 million a year to them, and we ain't getting nothing back. Okay?
So this chick's one of those boxes.
Yeah, the big box.
The big box.
We get a, well, we get maybe a quarter of a million dollars a year from them. About all we get.
I think I understood you get a little money and it goes to your resurfacing.
Yeah.
Match for your helmet.
That's all we get. Okay, we gave up a bridge across the river and the railroad track over here on this side. Okay, you stopped that. So that's why we had to do this study. And to get a perimeter road around Waycross.
That's the last task.
Because God said that we had to do this in order to, and he called y'all, you know, and y'all gave us a, go ahead to do it. So if we're on the right track, that's what I'm thinking about, with all these other trains stopping, you know, we want to get overpasses. We don't, we can't stop the trains.
Well, so...
Don't think you do the work with them.
It's done, you, like, I mean, you do this in parallel. So one separate is more of a traffic engineering study. The bypass feasibility study, that's a form of traffic engineering study, looking at the traffic quality, the aggregate crosses, the overpasses that we talked about, the routing. And then separately, this is going to be the planning, CTP is going to follow that more DCA, regional kind of process of the inventory assessment. So we've already, we're getting started on the bypass feasibility study. That's almost like a separate kind of study.
Separate deliverable, yeah, the work to bring.
Right, separate deliverable, right. Part of this plan have that, well, people are at the end, right?
That scares people to tell them we're going to have a bypass. They think everybody going to go bypass Waycross and don't stop. Everybody wants them to stop here, you know?
Give you the option. People that want to come out, you have to stop, and the trucks that want to keep moving to go around the block.
I just want them to keep moving, you know?
Yeah.
Would y'all have our contact number? Need anything? Don't be shy, reach out to us.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Anything. Got anything?
No, I just appreciate what they brought to us and, you know, talking about the trains and, you know, and we all know that's a problem, that's why we're trying to address it. We just talked about all of Ben Avenue overpassing. I think the chairman, he came up, uh, initially about that idea about doing that, but we do it local, because whenever you get the federal involved with it, it's going to take longer. Like the one on State Street, now that's federal going into that. But we're trying to do something, and it's not something going to happen overnight, but, you know, it's something we got to address, you know, with this train traffic, and not only for just inconvenience with cars and vehicle traffic, but also I'm thinking about emergency situation.
Exactly.
Ice fire.
There is a little element in, the plan does have a funding discussion. So one thing that's happening in Georgia, which is somewhat unique from the other states we're working in, is there's a Georgia DOT, which is set up towards Constitution, gas tax, they get those four cents, goes straight to GDOT. Y'all know this, most of what GDOT does has to go into two buckets. One is maintenance, and the other is the match for all the federal gas tax you pay, nineteen cents, twenty-three cents, whether it's gasoline or diesel. Georgia, when they instituted the state rail tollway authority, created the GTIP bank, Georgia's transportation infrastructure bank. So as that has grown in its assets, they are now able, and Janine Miller was part of the discussion with CTP, there's, that's a new vehicle that's coming online after the first 10 years or so of its existence, will give the state and local governments more options on 100% locally funded projects that can bypass some of that federal rate. So that's something, it's a good timing here, too.
Okay.
The state's got a lot of cash, so...
And we'll provide that, too, with the, what we'll say, federal funding sources and how we can apply that, that's pretty standard.
Yeah, that's what I'm after, is to get some of that money that we pay in. We pay one cent on that. We, we in that regional, but we don't get anything back out of it. And I'm just interested in the county's sharing that regional money, that we should have some help without, without this comprehensive...
Well, here's our point.
Right, exactly.
Now, this, we can't get it, you know?
Well, and that's part of it.
Do you know right off how much we send in?
We'll try to make...
What? The TSPLOST.
No, this is a regional, right, reason, all the county's paid.
It's one penny, and we're paying one penny, and they send us 25% of that penny back. That's what we use as discretionary funds in the region. That's all we get from the regional, unless we get projects on their list.
Yeah. See, that's what, probably some of them don't understand this thing, but that regional, we pay one cent, county does.
I don't get that.
Okay, get $11 million, just like we collect, she get, okay, it all goes to the regional. We don't get any of it back, except one quarter.
A quarter of that penny.
A quarter of that.
Yeah, a quarter of that cent.
Any projects that are on their regional list.
Because we can, we get...
You got to understand it, and this, this comprehensive study is going to put us back in to get, we can get some projects. We maybe can get some overpasses, a perimeter road out of it is what we're after.
I keep telling Todd he needs to come down and visit his brother in Heinsburg, but one of the unique things, and this is another thing that Georgia did with the regional transportation plan, is when they put those regions out there, only a few regions passed it, other regions didn't. And the idea was, again, kind of like State Road and Tollway thing, is that was a mechanism for regional sales tax, that the state would then work with the region to identify the priorities and use all state money to build. So y'all probably, I'm speculating, but I think the timing is accurate, when those, when regional transportation sales taxes were put in place, y'all were in that period, didn't have a plan. So you kind of got put to the back of the line. Other people set up, say, here's our plan, and GDOT said, yeah, I will work with you. So it's an odd thing to think about, but as the tax moves on, the projects that are being built now are taking care of what at that time the region and GDOT focused on the priorities. And here at the end of the collection, if it gets renewed again, you'll have the money to build your projects. Well, in theory, that's a potential option. Does that make sense? They're, they're underway spending the rest of the penny you don't get. But as they build their projects out, GDOT will have to say, well, it's time to come down to the bottom of the list and fill in what we missed. And obviously, things change over time. So we're capturing the changes right now, updating it for you.
It's already been going on, what, six, seven years now?
I think there were, was it?
Six.
Yeah, but they collected the amount of money that they said they were.
That's right, they had a cap.
They had to stop.
Had a cap, that's right.
And, but it's been approved again.
It's been approved again, they go in again. Another six years.
Which is good, because y'all, y'all have a plan in place and you're ready to go.
We want to get in on the second.
That's right.
B and A get.
Right.
You see what I'm saying?
Sir.
I mean...
We want to make sure when we step up to the plate, that we get our plan before we get...
We want our part.
You put your pay on this side, and here's the plan, and we want to get something on the other side.
Right.
And we want to prioritize that, right? And so here's the rules of prioritizing, for y'all, like prioritize, these are the top five, each category, top five intersection, appropriate top five roadway.
Right.
You know? And have, have a transparent process that that's for, right?
This'll give you the document to be at the table at the regional discussions.
But also, you know, a document that's more related by prioritization, kind of evaluation of each project.
And you know, something that we, I guess we, we all know, but we don't talk about a lot is way back, and it wasn't maybe none on this fish, but we left a bad taste in the old T's mouth.
Well, that's what this is all about. That's why we have it.
When they want to spend it, all that money, and then we basically say, no, we don't want it now. So now we got to try to kind of get back into their good graces.
That's what this is.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, it's a...
$68 million budget turned down.
On that same line of thought, that's an, the focus on regional taxes and the state road and toll authority, Georgia Infrastructure Construction Bank, is to solve the problem of the state is putting more and more of their money into the biggest choke points, right? So Metro Atlanta, the port, the interstate system gets, you might say disproportionate amount of their money, because that's where the federal aid flows. And as things got more expensive, the state's 20% match gets higher and higher. So they're feeling a financial pinch and looking for these other alternative sources to do these local regional projects. So it's a, it's a complicated dance.
It is.
It's complicated.
But we appreciate it, and I think we got good feedback, man. We got a lot of dots on the map, we got a little sticky, so...
So what will be y'all next, I guess, presentation or whatever? What's next?
Probably, I think we had on that schedule last summer, I think in September, we're looking at February, March. And we'll be circulating a draft before then to get feedback from the state, from y'all, the city, railroad.
Yes, so first, we'll look at the existing conditions before, make sure that's in line. Maybe a business partner can reach out, tear apart, you know? We really want that feedback, you know, to the citizens. We want it to be a priority, we want this to be a priority. As a first solution, we're going to do the assessment. So we document the existing conditions, then we assess what you project out, you know, 20, 30 years, what do you think could be the most congested roadway? Kind of an assessment of needs.
We'll revisit the schedule, it's about a month behind, I have to hurry.
So we'll do the assessment of needs, and the federal will be the recommendation before, prioritize projects.
And you know, my understanding of what's kind of weird, I guess would be the right term, whenever they did the last one, the railroad thing was addressed back then, and they knew it was coming, and it's here for some owners now. You know, about the train traffic and all that.
Yeah, now we...
That seems to be, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank y'all for coming.
We're here to go home.
Hold on. All right. Any commission comment?
I don't.
If not, I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting.
It's a move.
Second.